Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the City Council of Chambers. Before we begin our regular weekly meeting of the Lincoln City Council, I'd like to invite the mayor to come forward and discuss his Award for Excellence. Mr. Mayor, would you join us?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I come before the Pledge of Allegiance today.
Yes, today.
All right.
He doesn't pledge allegiance first.
The Mayor's Award of Excellence for May. Members of the council, thank you for allowing me to present it today. And it's being presented to one of our great engineers, Erica Nunez, of the Engineering Services Division of the Public Works and Utilities Department. Erica has been working with us since 2004. She was nominated in the categories of Customer Relations, Loss Prevention, and Productivity by fellow engineer Zach Becker and Engineering Services Manager Thomas Schaefer for her work on several aspects of the city's pavement management program. First, Erica's efforts were pivotal in gaining approval from the Federal Highway Administration so that certain concrete maintenance and rehabilitation work would be eligible for federal funding. In the process, she also helped to improve the working relationship with state officials who were working on the federal aid process with her. Secondly, Erica was a driving force behind the expansion of the program activities. She researched additional preventative treatments designed to preserve the pavement while maintaining the street in better condition at less cost. This led to the use of three different pavement sealants, the expansion of the concrete repair program, and the use of new micro-surfacing pavement processes. Erica's work and research also led to improvements in the pavement management software. She also strengthened communications with street maintenance operations so that pavement repairs were better coordinated, whether they were contracted for or handled in-house. The nominators wrote, "Erica has a real passion for municipal infrastructure and especially pavement management. She always is willing to offer assistance and share advice with others based on her knowledge," whether they be coworkers or the public or other municipalities who call regarding Lincoln's pavement management program. They said Erica is a much-requested speaker for public works programs and has represented the city at conferences as well as at neighborhood meetings and other city group meetings. In recent years, some additional funding has become available on short notice, allowing some street projects to be moved up in time. Erica was assigned to work on several of these projects, and the nominators mentioned three of them in particular: a $9.5 million federal stimulus project, a $10 million Annalow Valley project, and the $9.5 million from the state for work on national highway system roads. This amount of money in total is equal to having more than three years of projects being added to Erica's typical workload. In many of these cases, strict time limits were in place, but because of her efforts, the nominators said these funds, these funding sources, were able to be used at the appropriate time to rehab additional city streets. So it's my pleasure to present Erica with the Mayor's Award of Excellence for May. Please join me in congratulating her. Thank you very much. I think, Thomas?
Wanting to say a few words? Or Mickey? Or both of you?
Come on up, Thomas. You want to say something first?
Fight for it.
Oh, we are. We're totally gonna fight.
I defer. I nailed the word chart.
No, please. Oh, you go first.
I just can't say enough about Erica and what she's meant to this community. You know, she's found ways to stretch our taxpayer dollars farther by keeping good payments good, which we keep preaching, that that's lower cost, but she's really put that into practice for us. Not only that, but some of the work that she, groundwork she laid with FHWA in getting things approved, allowed for like our stimulus money to be put to work very quickly and across the entire community. Most of those dollar amounts that the mayor mentioned were able to be put into the community and into the pavement system here because of her work and the groundwork she delayed for that. So not only has she helped us put that, but we've gotten three years of extra work out of her for the same 10-year or 14-years that she's worked for. So she's really like a 17-year veteran, even though she's been at the city for 14. So, thank you very much.
Great remarks. I just want to say what an example of leadership and innovation, customer relations, and just being forward-thinking. Everything that you saw in the pre-council today was as a result of Erica and her work and her vision for pavement management today. We wouldn't have had the maps and the data and the diagrams. She has been pivotal in all of that, not to mention the fact that she and Thomas together brought pavement management theory to the city, to this community. So she's been an incredible leader for us in the community and a great person to work with, and I would say just a strong example of girl power and the fact that girls can engineer. So, thank you so much to you, Erica, for being a role model and an accomplished leader for our city.
Erica, would you like to say something? And maybe, do you have some family here?
I do. If I could take a minute to introduce my family.
That would be wonderful.
My husband, John, is here with us today, my son TJ, and my daughter Haley. And I appreciate their understanding for all the time it takes for the work that I do. They're very supportive of me and everything that I do, so I'm very happy they could share this with me here today. I guess I also wanted to thank Mickey and Thomas for their kind words, and the mayor for the words that he said as well, Zach and Thomas for nominating me, and my coworker, Erin, is my partner in crime and rehab, and she's here to support me as well, so I really appreciate that. I truly do get to work with a wonderful group of people, and there really is not a member of the design and construction team that has not played a role in one of the items that was discussed today. So I would really like to thank all of my coworkers for their support, whether it's delivering the projects that we want to do through rehab or going out and collecting data, checking on things. It's just a great, a great group of people to work with. I love what I do, and I'm very fortunate, and to be honored for doing what I love is just incredibly important to me. So I really appreciate it, and I'm very appreciative. Thank you.
Don't go away, because there are a couple of things that I want you to know. You obviously know how to do the work, but the kind of personal attention that I've seen you give individuals is amazing. And then, one big project in northwest Lincoln, Northwest 48th Street, which was complicated, took a year and a half, you've got roads closing and four-way stops and all kinds of diverging diamonds, all kinds of stuff, and I think I got one email of complaint. I mean, that was amazing, and your attention, your personal attention to that was really terrific, so great job.
Thank you. I wish you to share that with our entire team.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others?
Yes, congratulations. I'd just like to add a number of the different projects you've worked on and the ceiling and other things, like get out of roadways. So we're gonna become even more critical as we get into the next phase of catching up, and I just want to compliment you on your forward-thinking, I think it was Director Esposito said, so congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Others? Thank you again.
Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to again welcome you to the weekly meeting of the Lincoln City Council and ask you to join as we rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, a moment of silent meditation.
In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call each item listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk has read that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those in opposition. The applicant may make a short rebuttal. Each speaker will begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or opposition to an item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After the public hearing, the council will vote on resolutions and items under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda for that date nor planned for a future agenda. Clerk, would you please call the first item for us?
Yes, we would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and spell it and give your address and sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three. Does anyone wish to come forward for items one through three?
Seeing no one coming forward?
If not, we can vote on these items. Items one A and B were introduced by Gaylor Baird, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Leary and a second by Carl. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Items two A through D were introduced by Camp.
So moved. You have a motion by John, second by Roy. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then are our public hearing liquor resolutions. We just have one item. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call item four A, manager application of Chet Reed for Blaze Pizza at 1317 Q Street, Suites 170 and 180.
Thank you. Is there someone here to speak with us? Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chet, would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Reed, thank you for joining us. When you finish that, tell us a little bit about your application.
Yeah, I am the, we had a, Blaze Pizza's a new location. I wasn't the original general manager when it first opened. Shortly after opening, we switched general managers to myself. I am actually from York, Nebraska, lived there, all but 12 years of my life. Lincoln's a gorgeous city, but I did inherit my mom, my parents' home, so sort of nice to live rent-free.
Yes.
So, you know, the commute's not so bad.
Yeah.
So I commute to work every day.
Oh, my. Are there any questions of the applicant?
I have a comment.
Yes, Cindy.
Thank you. First, I think the name Blaze Pizza is outstanding, but it could be because I have a grandson named Blaze. But also, I happened to have met an Uber driver the other day that commutes in from York every day, so you might want to check in if you have a ride to work.
Right, commuting is good.
Does anyone in the audience like to speak to this item?
You can sit down.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of item four A.
Second.
You have a motion by John and a second by Cindy for approval of item four A. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then are our public hearing resolutions. Item five A, accepting a report of new impending claims against the city for the period of May 16th through the 31st.
Is there someone to speak about?
Ask if anyone's here to testify.
Yes, is there anyone here to testify on this resolution? No? Would you call the next item, please?
All right, next is item five B, approving the amended local emergency operations plan for Lancaster County.
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney. This is an item that comes before the council on a periodic basis. This is a plan that is required for each county in Nebraska by NEMA. The actual form itself, which was not included for security reasons, is about 430 pages. Most of it's just, I mean, the template is fairly standard, and the update, in this case, was fairly standard, just a matter of changing names and titles and so on. But it's required, it's been passed by Lancaster County, and we, as well as other communities within Lancaster County, are asked to sign off on it.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, Leary.
I see Mr. David Sabres here. I was hoping he could come up and just speak to it briefly.
Jim David Sabre, the Director of Lincoln Lancaster County Emergency Management. As Jeff mentioned, this is an update of the 2012 plan. The current rotation that we're on requires Lancaster County to update our local emergency operation plan once every five years, so that's what this update is. I can't track the legislative changes because I have to use the template that's issued by the state, so oftentimes, that's, the question is, what has changed? Not much has changed, and it is an emergency operation plan. Primarily, we operate under our standard operating procedure. I know from my familiarity with city-county departments, they have very robust standard operating procedures. The emergency operation plan is for those conditions. If we are in an emergency or disaster declaration, it identifies the necessary roles and responsibilities. So essentially, it's just a companion document to our standard operating procedures.
Thank you, Carl.
So, Jim, I don't know, what was it, two years ago, we were in a meeting here, and there's a tornado warning going on, and we keep meeting, so.
Again, that would be a thing where whatever building you are in, you want to make sure that you have a safety plan. You've identified the best available shelter options, so if you need to move from the council chambers to those areas, you want to make sure that they're identified. I know the building commission is the one that maintains those. That's one of the responsibilities that falls to me, is to review those locations to, again, identify them and make sure that they're the best available options if we need to relocate for severe weather or any other threat or harm that may be present.
So that would be our duty, I guess, to determine a policy or plan for those kinds of eventualities.
You definitely want to have something in place in order to do that, and I refer to it in very generic terms. Severe weather would be a shelter location. If there were a fire or a hazmat situation in the building, that's evacuation. So essentially, that's what, you want to make sure you've identified the situation you're dealing with and the, what will provide the most safety to the most people. Do we need to shelter in place, or do we need to evacuate?
Very good. Thank you.
You may remember, Carl, we had a little problem. There were four of us guys in the men's restroom, and we violated the Open Meetings Act.
So I would think the public safety concern would override that, but again, something to be mindful of.
Leary, yes.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to confirm then, so there are no, no other substantive updates? It's mostly just roles and titles as our city attorney said?
Correct.
Okay. And if there are pieces that are applicable to this body, like what Carl raised, a great point, I mean, we don't necessarily have briefings on a regular basis about that, or, but if there is, I think if you think there are procedures we ought to be aware about, because we, at that night, we did, we just kept going, and there was no sense of is what the policy is. It might be helpful for, for this body to have some sort of a...
Sure, I'm certainly welcome to any of those suggestions, or as I said, that there are a lot of subject matter experts that I work with that can identify what those best practices are, and that's essentially what we look to identify, and that's going to change. So again, we want to make sure that we're current on that, and that's where that review of the layup gives us the opportunity to do that. If we haven't revisited some of those issues in a while, we want to make sure to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Does anyone else in the audience like to testify on this item? Seeing no one? Teresa, would we go to the next item?
Yes, next would be item five C, approving a contract agreement between the city and Uribe Refuse Services for the annual requirements for scrap tire recycling for a four-year term.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Donna Garden. I'm the Assistant Director of Public Works and Utilities. This contract is for collection and disposition of scrap tires that are collected at our two landfills. This is a four-year contract with Uribe Refuse for disposition in accordance with all federal, state, and local regulations. The total contract is $32,000, or about $8,000 a year. Are there any questions?
Carl?
Yeah. So I've heard from one of my community's, our park area, they utilize this a lot to help clean up their neighborhood. Could you explain a little bit about how, how this, this works, what it does for our city?
Actually, this, this contract is for the four large bins that we have, two at each at Bluff Road and two at the 48th Street landfill. And people there can bring their tires in that are collected around the area, and like a neighborhood collection of something like that. We do charge for taking in those tires, and that, that charge does pay for the cost of this contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Roy?
So is this a renewal, or is this a different company that handled it?
It's a renewal with Uribe, and it is a four-year contract.
Okay. Leary?
Is there anything different about this contract from the previous one that was in place?
It's slightly more expensive than the previous one, but other than that, no. I think they're costing approximately another $1,000 per year for the service of picking up these boxes.
Did they say why? What justified that cost increase?
We had one bidder on the contract, so.
And John?
Yes, would you identify the procedure that citizens can use if somebody drops a used tire in their location and rather than take the proper steps to recycle it?
Absolutely. Those two tires have been in my alley for the last three months, right?
Yes, if you can pick them up and have them removed, either you can call a collection service to do that, if you can't do it yourself physically, or you can pick the tire up and take it yourself to a, either one of the landfills. There is boxes there for disposition of that material, so, and there is a charge for those tires to be taken in at the landfill, either one of the landfills.
So the citizen gets penalized there for somebody else just tossing a tire?
And it's probably good to point out that you're not supposed to drop off tires at our regular recycling sites.
That is correct. Those tires are very special. There's only special ways that they can be utilized. Everything from, you can use them to make playground mats and things of that nature, or in this case, they're ground up and used as alternative daily cover at the Butler County landfill, actually. They're also mono-filled in Kansas, that's another place that they can be taken, but that is regulated by our state Title 132 as to where they can go. They are not recyclable in a typical processor, in a recycling processor plant.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this item?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Teresa, would you help us with this?
Yes, and then we can vote on these items. Item five A is the report of claims. This was introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Leary and a second by Carl. Any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next is item five B, the local emergency operations plan, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Leary and a second by Carl. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item five C then is the contract with Uribe, introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion by Leary and a second by Carl. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, would you call the roll for us?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Show.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then are our public hearing ordinances, second reading. Item six A, text amendment 18006, amending sections 27.06.180 and 27.62.150 of the Lincoln Municipal Code to allow outdoor vehicle storage as a conditional use in the I-1 industrial district.
Is there anyone here to testify on this item?
Can you fill this out?
Please.
I'll do that in a second.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, good afternoon. My name is Alex Buskle. I am the representative for the SIBS LLC, which is located at 720 East Norfolk Avenue, 68701. So the actions requested are, as said there, for a text amendment for outdoor vehicle storage at the location that is the address 5250 Superior Street. So the SIBS property, they own two lots there. The lot we're asking for the text amendment is 2.7 acres. What they're, what we are wanting to do is allow outdoor vehicle storage, so they're going to put up a fence around with security and lighting and the whole nine yards, and what they're going to allow to be stored there for a fee is RVs and boat storage. So right to the north of the lot is Arrow Stage Lines, which is a motor coach company. They leased that out from us, and so there is motor coaches and school buses stored there, and just to the south is, right now, it's just an open kind of triangle lot that they're wanting to pave and then park RVs and boats and stuff on. So we don't expect a lot of in-and-out traffic from there. It'd mostly be, in the summer months, we'd expect a lot of the stuff to be out at the campsite around the water, and then in the winter months, have a lot of it. It's going to be all outdoor storage room, you know, building up. There will be a, there is a little shack, per se, that, where we have an attendant there at certain hours, and then there would be an electric gate that would open and close with a PIN code, so that is what we're asking for. We talked to, or with the planning commissioner, it was talked about of, of the text amendment, and that is what we realized would be the best way to go about this, so we could start the, start the process, so. Any questions?
Yes. Leary?
Thanks for coming down. A lot of the staff report focused on the screening that would be required of anyone who made a request like this. Can you speak to your plans for screening the outdoor storage, and are you feeling good about that?
Yeah, yep. When it was first brought up, I wasn't super knowledgeable and all that, but we did go through it, and we are, we are confident that everything will pass fine. We're still talking about the process of how that's going to be done, but we are confident that we, it'll all pass, no problem.
Do you have any idea what kind of screening you would then implement? Is that something you've got a wish for?
It is, it is not something I've, we've talked about yet.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Carey, if he has a moment.
David Carey, with the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Department?
Thank you, Dave. I heard the applicant talking about paving the little triangle. Whenever I hear paving, I always think of runoff water. Is there any issues related to that?
As far as, our understanding is that there is not. However, if there's enough of an impact, certainly that would come into review to make sure that our standards are met.
Okay, that was my question. Okay.
Other questions? Leary?
Thanks, David. So one of the questions I had about this item had to do just with the planning department's approach, and in this case, I think it came at the suggestion of the department to look at a full text amendment rather than a change of zone for this particular location. I'd like to hear a little more about that, but a lot of my questions are very similar to what planning commissioners asked regarding, you know, sort of why that was, how this would affect entryway corridors, and with all the work and investment that's gone into trying to make those more appealing, you know, the wisdom of a text amendment change that affects so many different corridors really comes to mind. On top of that, in the planning commission testimony, your staff stated that they, they didn't know why this had been a disallowed use in this particular zoning district, and that they would do research on that. they would do research on that. I would really, and I appreciate that they have since that time, but if you're going to make a text amendment change, it seems it would be prudent to do that research ahead of bringing it to planning commission, and certainly ahead of bringing it to council, so that we can understand if there was any reason for that kind of exclusion in the past, or if not, you know, that we can understand that as well, if it was an oversight, or... And I recognize that sometimes checking the historical record can be a time-consuming task, but usually there are reasons for it. So if you could start to address those questions?
Sure. I think all those questions are good questions to ask, and we've either been fielding them or have looked into those things. Start with the text amendment change versus potentially a change of zone on this property in particular. That really comes down to, we did look at that, let's be, I'll be very clear about that, that probably was our first thought. But the problem with that is that it ends up being a bit like spot zoning, which is something that we definitely want to avoid, if at all possible. And what happens here is that when you look at the zoning pattern around this property is that you have a lot of H3 along Cornhusker Highway, and so H3 already does allow outdoor vehicle storage. So you lead yourself to quickly saying, well, why don't we just change it to that? What would happen is that we would have to have other properties if we didn't do spot zoning, so an island of H3 that's surrounded by the I-1, which would be the case in this, in this situation, if we did it that way. You'd have to bring in other property owners along the way in order to make that change. So in this case, we felt like, because we have an alternative, which I'll get to that, we didn't feel like that was the appropriate zoning action to propose. So that answers the question of why not just a change of zone. As far as how the text change itself works, and this gets into the question about why wasn't outdoor vehicle storage allowed in the I-1 in the first place? And so we quite honestly scratched our heads when this first came in, and we, to a person, already felt like it already was allowed, even though it wasn't. So we started with that reaction and went from there, and looking back...
So what does that mean?
That means that we were very surprised that it wasn't already allowed. And then when we did look at the history of that point, we could not find any particular point in time of a decision of why it was excluded from the I-1. And we also looked into our institutional knowledge in the form of Steve Hendrickson, who's been here for twenty-nine years now, and he really did not know why it would have been excluded. And so with that information, as we went around the table and kind of went pros and cons of how to handle this, we looked at what is the harm of I-1 allowing outdoor vehicle storage, and we honestly don't have a con. With the exception of the possibility of that visual impact on an entryway corridor, which is Cornhusker Highway. So then we started to talk about that aspect of this consideration here. Where we land on that part of the consideration of this proposal is that outdoor vehicle storage, unlike some other uses that are much more visible along this corridor, as well as already allowed in the H3 district, which really is predominant along Cornhusker Highway, in addition to the I-1 zoning. Vehicle sales as a use out there, that's very predominant. That does not have the type of screening that is required of outdoor vehicle storage, in this case, what would be required of this use. And that is a sixty percent screen up to ten feet, so you could have a ten-foot fence that had some openings on it, or you could have a six-foot opaque fence, which is more typical of how that would happen. So this use actually has some of our most stringent screening requirements that goes along with it, which isn't the case for some of these other uses that is quite honestly part of what we all react to when we go up and down Cornhusker, and we see vehicle car sales that are right up to the property line and things like that. We are looking at that corridor as part of our Thirty-third and Cornhusker RTSD project. We have a subarea plan that's underway, as well as a corridor study, and part of that corridor study is to look at these types of issues. And quite frankly, the issue of how outdoor vehicle storage will be handled probably won't be a predominant focus point on that. It is going to be more about the vehicle sales that does not have that screening that already is permitted, as well as some other uses. I don't want to just completely pick on that use, because it is an important use in a general sense for our community. So that is kind of the thinking and the thought process of how we got to the point of saying we are comfortable with the I-1 allowing outdoor vehicle sales. We don't have a historical, connect the dots to say a reason why we shouldn't do that, and we, as professionals in the planning department, felt like it should be allowed in the I-1. That is the heaviest use district that we have. A lot of other things can be already allowed by right, for that matter, that are less impactful than outdoor vehicle storage. And then again, the outdoor vehicle storage has that screening requirement attached to it already. So that is a thought process of how we got to this point.
And do you feel like the screening, we have a process in place to ensure adequate screening will actually take place?
Yes, so continuing to look into kind of our capacity to do the right thing, which is to enforce the laws we have on the books for screening in this case, we are in a better spot now than we have been in the past. We have a position, a part of a position that actually is doing the work on landscape enforcement, for that purpose of enforcing and following through on those existing standards, in this case, screening of outdoor vehicle storage. We feel confident now, more so than we could have said, say, two years ago, for that to be followed up on. Yeah, we'll leave that at that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Carey? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to testify on this item? Thank you. Theresa, would you call the next item, please?
All right, I'll call item six B through D together. They are the redevelopment agreement between the city and Bit Construction for redevelopment of property generally located at eight-one-O Street for the renovation of the Raymond Brothers' redevelopment, amending the fiscal year seventeen-eighteen CIP to authorize and appropriate one million, one hundred seventy-nine thousand, six hundred seventy dollars in TIF funds, and authorizing issuance of tax allocation bonds.
Good afternoon. David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. Consistent with what you were just hearing from the other previous discussion, the topic of whether uses fit well with each other is something that we care about in the Urban Development Department. And in fact, the project that you see today, which is in this project area that you saw when we brought the plan amendment forward, this is the building that we'll be talking about today, is across the street from an example of what that was. It was the Schwartz Paper Company.
Landis, the screen wasn't on. Perhaps you want to redo that for everyone's benefit?
The area that we announced as the plan amendment the last time we were here, this is the building that will be talked about today. But across the street, this building is the O. Schwartz Paper Company. An industrial use, good employer, they found a new home. But if you recall, when you would drive down Eighth Street, there were often times in the morning when there was a semi parked across Eighth Street, and you had to drive into the parking tray to get around from either side this industrial semi filling Eighth Street. That's an example of a use that really doesn't fit the surrounding feel. At one time it did, but over time it doesn't. The developer on this block and on this building, Craig Geese, after successfully doing that rehabilitation and opening up the condos that are in that building, said, gosh, I'd like to do it again. And across the street is a historically significant older building. It's the Raymond Brothers' building. This looks a little impressive, but that's because it isn't very close up. These are boarded-up windows, and as you can see, some of these windows are broken. In fact, while it might look like a handsome brick building, the truth of the matter is that inside it looks like this. This is one of those windows that has fallen into the structure, and if you want to take a look at what that floor looks like, it looks like that. So this is one of our oldest, most, you know, a significant historical structure, and that's the condition of the building. If there is a reason today why we are proceeding at the speed that we are, and we are proceeding relatively quickly, it is because engineers say it is quite likely that this building would not survive another winter, that a heavy snowstorm would bring down the floor and the windows, the roof and the windows. So if this building will be saved, it needs to be done now. In fact, there are some work that's being done right now, not with TIF funds, that wouldn't be appropriate, but there are some public safety changes being made in the building by the new owner, which is Mr. Geese, who's here. This is another look at the building from the Eighth Street side, and one of the things that we'd like to have happen is the creation of a dock. If you've been on the Mill Dock or some of the aspects throughout Haymarket, this is the way of harmonizing one use with the surrounding uses, because it'll have that same feel that Eighth Street does. The project itself is seven-point-nine million dollars. Of that, six-point-seven is the money of the developer, one-point-two would be the contribution of tax increment financing proceeds. It would create a little over eight thousand square feet of commercial space, first floor, active retail, active edges, the kind of thing that our downtown design standards say is appropriate, and then three floors of condos. It is also hoped that we'll be able to bury the electrical lines behind the building in the alley, and we'll work hard to make that happen if we possibly can. The planning commission ruled unanimously in favor. The Historical Preservation Organization gave this a certificate of approval for the docks and the windows. Those were the parts that they carried about. The fact sheet that we sent you, I think, included some of the material that was presented as a planning commission. These are thirteen different ways that this project matches the long-term comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan of this city. You'll find in some of your materials the sources and uses of TIF funds. The truth of the matter is that there's a longer list, and there are a set of resources. And the list contains the commitments that the developer will do, whether the TIF proceeds are available or not. So we are going to cover the issuance costs of the bond, and bond attorney is here today if you have questions about the bond piece that's coming up, the one percent city administration fee, and then site acquisition, which is listed here, is a million, six-hundred thousand dollars. Since the total amount of TIF money is a million-two, this is where the TIF dollars stop. But there are also commitments for environmental remediation, that'll be the developer's responsibility. There are commitments for facade enhancements, tuck pointing and the like, as you can see that that brick building is in need of that work, streetscaping, sidewalks, curbs, an Eighth Street dock, and hopefully a potential alley paver restoration, and those are the commitments of the developer as well. Of those, one of the things that you want to understand is that, in fact, with a curb change, we'll be able to accommodate about twelve new angled parking stalls in that area, and that's a valuable addition to the Haymarket area. There is a picture that I should be able to show you of the dock's intention. It'll be hard to see from where you are. It appears only as a low iron fence above a concrete dock. The developer is here, the developer's attorney is here, and also Ed Zimmer has a unique perspective with historic preservation, and for which I thought you might find valuable what he might have to say about the historical significance of this particular structure. Are there questions I can answer for you?
Yes, Larian?
Thanks, Dave. Could you put Exhibit C back up? Because I did have a question. I just want to clarify that it's the sources and uses of funding. You mentioned that there's a gap. Does that mean that those, can you be more specific? Does that mean that certain things won't be done that's on that chart? Or does that mean that the developers...
The gap, we are...
The one that looks like a spreadsheet?
Thank you. I know which one it is, I just...
Oh, it's on the back of that. I think it's the sheet.
Ah, there, thank you. That's right. What this is a reminder of is the difference between what the TIF will pay for and the commitments that are being made, and that gap falls to the developer, and they're committed to do that by this agreement. In other words, they're not just committed to where the TIF dollars stop, it goes beyond that. And we have a particular, Kent Seacrest always wants to remind us that the developers are doing more of the things we want them to than what we're helping with TIF dollars. So he regularly provides us with that gap figure, and we use it on occasions like this.
Well, and I ask just because the fact sheet says it's a seven-point-nine million-dollar project, but it looks like it's an eight-point-four million-dollar project, which is, is that right? Am I reading that right, or...
When we've put the project together and we've done our numbers, I see that this is listed this way. I'm going to ask Kent why that's the case. We have cited seven-point-nine. Those are the figures we're doing. And I think, other than, while this might appear, the project that we recite is a seven-point-nine, unless there's been a change, and perhaps you'll have a chance to correct me if I'm wrong.
Total dollars are eight-point-four million. If you read across, the developers contributing seven-point-two, the bulk of that goes into private improvements, but they're still funding that gap of a million-two, so that's in that seven-point-two million dollar. And then the balance, a million, one hundred seventy-nine thousand is the TIF number, and you add those two together and you get eight-point...
There we are.
...four million dollars.
Better reading this than I. I had some notes that must have been out of date. Thank you.
And then the other question I had, Dave, has to do with the parking. The project allows for the reservation of up to thirty stalls in the lumberworks garage, and that, I guess I just wonder, was the lumberworks garage a TIF project as well?
No, it was a private project. However, the new building to the west is a TIF project. We did the lumberworks with City Resources.
I was glad to hear that there'd be twelve spots of street parking added as a result of this project, since you're losing some of the parking potentially that's in the garage itself. How do you weigh, I mean, trying to support growth and development, redevelopment in the, you know, older neighborhoods or older, you know, parts of our city, when parking is at such a premium? And how does this affect the larger vision for increasing parking downtown?
Uh...
I know it's exciting to staff, it would be treated kind of like monthly parking.
Yes.
So it's not like it's a complete loss, but...
No, by no means. But it is, it is an inducement to get people to build in this area. Downtown Lincoln is unlike all the rest of the city, it's B4. If you go out to South Point, South Point has to provide their parking. West Gate provides their parking. East Park provides their parking. Businesses in all other parts of the city have an obligation to provide the parking for their own units. We have said, I don't know for how long, but for a great deal of time, that parking in the downtown area is not a private obligation, although we have private garages, and we've had projects with some of the parking that they have taken on for themselves. But developers will tell you, parking is very expensive. It generally, in many situations, loses money by comparison, or if not, it requires a large enough area that has some paid-off stalls to help with the ones that are paying bonds. We do this on occasion when there is a redevelopment project. This building will not be done without help. And by the way, let's imagine that we lose this building. Well, it'll be torn down, but it'll be downtown property, and at that point, it'll be valuable, and somebody will buy it if they know where their employees are going to park. If you can't tell them how that need will be solved, they will look for a part of the city that doesn't have that, and we will wait with this building in this shape until it falls down, because it now represents a public safety risk. On a couple of occasions, those windows have fallen out, not in. So we assist that. We think of parking as part of a larger purpose. It's not simply a utility, but it also is a development tool. We have increased the number of on-street parking stalls by moving, in some cases, from parallel to angled parking, or including more areas of downtown that we manage and get to have turnover. Businesses want turnover, they want to have multiple customers throughout the day, and we've also added, well, let's see, four garages, five garages since I've been here, the Larson Building at about eight-hundreds, lumberworks, which is under five-hundred, and the three JPA garages. We now have, let's count, that's about four thousand more parking stalls than when I began.
John?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Landis, and thanks to the developers here. A couple of questions. The, on the, going back to what my colleague was asking on the parking and lumberworks, what are the restrictions on that? Because I know we have evolved over time, not to necessarily have dedicated parking and so forth, and how do the...
These are not dedicated, and they're not subject to any special treatment for special events or for football Saturdays. If you have monthly parking, the seven days of football are unlike every other day of the year. So while you can get monthly parking, we don't sell that day. So, while you can get monthly parking, we don't sell that day. And if, in fact, that garage is subject to special uses and you come in at night to go to your job, you'll pay that special price. So, it is the norm for the rest of the paying public at the same rates and with the same rights, but it is something that the developer can rely upon. So when there's a tenant, they can say, "We have some stalls that are reserved for us. If you don't use them, that's great, but if you want to, they exist for your use." And we would do that.
And when you said stalls reserved, though, you meant open parking?
I only mean open parking. What I don't mean is nested parking, where there's a separate gate or specializing units. Now, we have several places in the city where we've done that. It goes back, I think, one of the very first ones was university towers, where there are certain stalls in the building that are reserved for those folks who use those. So we have a checkered career. If you were to ask us, we don't like to do that. We have made some special arrangements. When, for example, in the Olson Building, there was a walkway, well, then, we did make some reservation so that the cars on the far side of the walkway matched the user for whom we had exacted the cost of getting the walkway. But we generally don't, and we didn't in this case.
Yes. Could you put the map up again of the TIF area? Because it's fairly extensive there, going around the whole block and across to the Schwartz property. I think it was crosshatched there.
Mm-hmm.
And when you outline on your spreadsheet there the number of needs for improvements, you've had a very long list that would exceed all of this. What, and it also mentions in the documents about the city at its expense, or at least at no expense to the developer, will do some things. Could you address that? You've got the alley relocation utilities, nothing. It sounds like the city, in addition to TIF, and maybe through LES, is going to be providing some subsidies.
LES has some above-ground lines that run this way through this alley and the adjoining property. Above-ground lines are less reliable than underground lines. They have more frequent downtime, brownouts, and lapses of service. So it's a good idea, if at all possible. It's aesthetically valuable, but it's also a higher efficiency for those. But it can be expensive. LES is willing to spend $120,000 to do these two blocks of burying those lines. It'll have an effect for all of the users in the surrounding areas. The developer will go to their neighbors, because when you bury the line, you have to create a new linkage to each of the buildings that are on that. Part of the agreement says that they will be responsible for making sure that other property users are willing to do that, and that they would, the developer will pay the costs of that. So that's not a TIF dollar, that's a developer dollar. But it matches what LES will be doing in this case. LES has projects every year in which they bury lines. But on occasion, we help shape which of those projects are done in what order, which is why we would have some impact when we say, "Gosh, we'd like to have it be done here." And it is an area that we think would be valuable to have that work done.
And with the expanse that that goes around to, I mean, that's a large area, that's well beyond the Raymond Building itself. What items are you envisioning would be done within that area?
We, actually, you've seen the list of work that's authorized there. This is public right-of-way. This is the alleyway. But you'll notice it includes this one because the buried line continues over to this area. But all of this is public property but for the Raymond Brothers. So, it depends on what the, you know, where the streetscape is done, although you would expect it to be done surrounding and facing the building, but it might run down a little bit further than that. It would be, it would be allowed to run further down than that if we wished.
When the Schwartz redevelopment agreement was done, did it, I've forgotten the area it included, but wasn't some of this in there for streetscape? Or maybe I'm just...
Yes, and in fact, this block hopefully will have an integrated design that surrounds all four sides of the block, and will have contributions from the lumberworks project among them.
And then finally, LES substation. Could you describe the improvements that are being made to that to help with that?
There will be, hopefully, as part of that design, we'll have a screening of a fence that'll be dark metal, some ornamentation, and then some overhanging lighting structures that will come out and make the walkway not only safe, but in fact inviting. So, we hope to use light and then more attractive fencing than what is the norm.
I think that's under construction right now.
Yes, it is. And Larian, you have a question?
Yeah, I want to piggyback a little bit on what John raised with restrictions on parking.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure that I'm reading this correctly, but it does say in the attachment A that commercial monthly parking stalls, they can have up to thirty-six parking stalls, but excluding events parking. And then a few lines down, it has a section on events parking where it says that up to thirty-six of the commercial parking permits, which is all of them, may include the right to park in the lumberworks parking garage for events. So could you just explain what that means? Is that contradictory, or is that somehow, just, there are more details to make that...
When you park in an event parking, you pay for the event parking, but you can be there, as opposed to being excluded.
Okay.
Now, if there's something different than that, let me ask Wayne if there's an administration cost to that that I don't know about. I'm not sure what happens when the employee comes at eight o'clock at night, in the morning, and comes at five o'clock. So, if you'll let me just say, generally, we want our month, we want monthly parkers to do what other drivers would do when special events are there. If that isn't the case here, let me ask Wayne on what that is and provide you with an email response.
So if I understand you correct, it's just that even if you have a commercial parking spot, you would still need to pay for events parking? And you have the right to do that? Is that what that...
We have the right to charge for event parking.
Okay. Thanks.
Carl?
Yeah, and just to clarify that a little more. You mentioned the seven football games, but in this area, you're talking about arena events. So that's fifty. All right, it's a bunch.
There can be more, that's right. The arena events, however, rarely, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure how many they come to this garage. The reason is, we do an analysis as to how far they go. And remember that there are two 900 and a 700 stall garage before you get to this one. The large majority of Pinnacle Bank Arena events don't get into the third garage. So we do event parking in the first and second garage, and the third one isn't event parking.
Well, I know that I tried to go to an event that was not at the arena when there was something going at the arena and parking in this garage, because this was close to where I was going.
And you wasn't, made it all the way down to here?
I wasn't going to pay the ten bucks for it, so, yeah.
Well, and by the way, it's possible for us to subsidize that kind of a thing. I will tell you that our ability to pay off the bonds that allow us to build new garages is to charge the market rate. And there are private garages that sell at that rate. It may be regarded as exceptional. It is a reflection of the market's supply and demand. That's where pricing comes from, unless there's a subsidy.
I have a question, and this is a little bit logistic. Hypothetically, the garage has 300 stalls in it, and you earmarked thirty stalls for this business. Does that mean that you, for the event, you're only going to use 270, and those thirty are going to be sitting there hoping that an employee uses them?
No. If we do event parking, the garage gets turned over to the event.
So I'm an employee, I've been told there's thirty stalls available, and I could show up and there would be none?
That's right.
Okay.
And when you went down to your office on football Saturday?
Yes.
You won't get in. Although, it does appear, and it's regulated by the contract that we create with the individual parker, and those things are described in the contract. Thank you. Are there other questions?
I think that the parking management has some arrangement where there may be a two-tier monthly parking, and that would include even the football games, because those, I mean, you're looking at condos, and so those residents aren't going to go out there and move their vehicles for that day.
My experience is, when you start down the topic of parking, it is an endless topic, and perhaps this is appropriate for a pre-council meeting or something like that, so that we can share these. These are not unremarkable issues, and they come up in many settings. It's a controversial topic with lots of strong feelings. Anybody who drives around looking for that stall, growing more and more frustrated because they're going to be late for dinner with a friend.
Carl?
They're waiting to call me, I know.
I have a question for Ed Zimmer. Ed is coming forward as we're talking. Dave's warning us that this building is crumbling as we speak. Dave, tell, Ed, tell us about the building. What's the historical significance of it?
Ed Zimmer, Planning Department, E.D.Z.I.M.M.E.R. This is an 1885 warehouse building. It was one of the first grocery wholesalers, and grocery wholesaling was the most significant business, private business in Haymarket, other than perhaps railroading, which tied them all together. It's also unusually ornate in having a fine cast-iron storefront on the first floor, terracotta ornaments between second and third, wrought iron window trim above, and a cast-iron or a pressed metal cornice. It also, I think, occupies a particularly significant location, so visible to both the eastbound traffic on the overpass, southbound traffic coming into Haymarket, it's really a gateway building. Schwartz is also, but even to a greater degree, I think this is just an extremely prominent building in the district, and has then been underutilized and under-maintained for a very long period of time. I think all of those added together, it's a uniquely significant building in that historic district, in that National Register district. And I think the chance to move it forward and get it secured, get it in use, get lights coming on in the building is tremendously important to the overall health of Haymarket, and I think also to the transition and growth of South Haymarket, just beyond it.
Yes, please.
Ed, when was the last real use, I guess, productive use of the building, and what was it used for?
Well, it's had storage in it, and the warehouse is a storage building. It's been, prior to the current owners, it was a plumbing wholesale, supply building, storage for that business. So it's been, it's had that lighter intensity use on some of the floors. That's what, sometimes the trucks are parked up, backed up to this building, but not typically as often. So it's not been out of use, it's been out of active maintenance for quite a long time.
Other questions? Anyone else would like to testify on this item?
Craig Gees, G.I.E.S., 245 South 84th Street, the developer for the project. So really, as much as anything here to answer questions that you might have, I guess. First off, I just really want to help thank staff. Dave Landis, Hallie Salem, Dallas McGee, Tim C., and Ed Zimmer have really kicked in in terms of staying on a task for this project. As David had shared a number of the pictures, as we first looked at the building, there was a number of structural issues that were going on with the building, and frankly, as we were doing the Schwartz project across the street, we were wondering what the disposition might be at some point. The picture we have where the windows had fallen in, that was really two weeks after we closed on the property. A windstorm came up, and that's what happened. So the work that we've been doing right now is to stabilize the building. We took the windows out on the north side because we didn't want any more of them falling out. Where David said some fell outward, that wasn't on our watch, but that was true. There were some glass, you know, things on the outside of the building. So we've really tried to make it safe for it. Where the building was a skate park, and you see that dip in there, you know, we've since shored up the building and just got it safe. So in a sense, that it doesn't bother any of our neighbors or people that are passing by. So the fence and the things that you see are really to create a safe work environment for everybody that's able to pass by. As Hallie continues, tell me, there's a lot of things that are happening in that street, Eighth Street, Down End Street, and so we've created fence and some barriers to try and make it safe for people to go there. So, our intentions are to be able to take that building and really make it similar to what we had at the Schwartz paper, and create condominiums that allow people to enjoy the Haymarket District. The upper three floors will be condominiums, we think six per floor, which gives about eighteen on there, and then the commercial space on the first floor. So our intentions are to take it in a similar kind of a product as what we had across the street. There's very similar in terms of the redevelopment agreement to what we had on the Schwartz paper, so it was allowed to move this along in the fashion that it did. One item, I guess, maybe Kent can correct me on anything that I say illegally wrong necessarily with it, but the parking issue, we have no subsidy. Basically, it's the opportunity to, and just like John mentioned, that there are tiers in terms of, each of the individual owners have to go and rent the stalls and work with the contract with the city as it exists today. So there's nothing in this agreement that gives us any special preference with regard to pricing, subsidy, and any of those kinds of things. It's only reserving those opportunities if an owner or tenant wants one of those spaces. So our intention is to be able to create, as David mentioned, every time we talk about a project that might occur in downtown Lincoln or in the Haymarket areas, "Where are you going to park?" First question when I called Kent and said, "How about this building?", he asked me, "Where are you going to park?". So it becomes a similar kind of a condition that happens. I'll mention that relatively new to standing before you and talk as a developer, we have, my partner and I have a construction background, and so we've excited about trying to take buildings like this and make Haymarket and downtown Lincoln something. It's home to us, and it's really something that we want to save these buildings. The fact that little repair was being done to it was a discouragement, so we're glad to be able to kind of restore it. And if we're able to get the redevelopment agreement in place, we're able to do the things that we talked about and not take the attitude that the previous owners might have had with it. So with that, maybe I'll have Kent share some things that I overlooked.
Well, he forgot to thank Mike Rogers and Dallas McGee.
I did say Dallas.
Didn't you say?
Maybe I did.
Mike Rogers is here too, as a bond counsel, been very helpful, and we do appreciate the effort of staff on this. They met and worked real hard with us on this important building. The redevelopment area is bigger than what we're going to do. We'll be doing the streetscape, abutting basically the Raymond Building and transitioning, but we will not be doing all that area around. If we have super hyperinflation someday and there's a lot of extra tax, the city could possibly go back in and capture that extra super hyperinflation, but they're not saying that today, and we're not saying that today, but that would allow that potential to happen. The final thing on parking, we do do parking and stated that it's the regular parking, of which you do get kicked out if you don't have event parking for events, and it does include, depends on the garage, but up to 25 events with the football and the arena. We say that you can have the regular parking, and then we give you the right also to have the event parking. Most people don't take the second event. They just are happy with the regular, and they know on those event days that they will be asked to remove their car or get ticketed accordingly. So, and as Craig pointed out, we do pay the market rate, and that allows the city here, a year from now, two years from now, if they need to raise rates for maintenance or other reasons, we are going to get to pay that, or else we don't get to park in your garage. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any follow-up questions.
Any questions for these testifiers?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to testify on this item?
Seeing no one. Teresa?
All right, we can move into our voting session with our ordinance's third reading. Item 7A is Annexation 18002, Application of Ring Neck Development to Annex approximately 33.56 acres at Northwest 48th and West Holdridge, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Okay.
We have a motion by Carl and a second by Cindy. Is there discussion? Carl?
Yeah, this is really good. I mean, we're seeing the addition of housing in the area. The city's already made great infrastructure improvements. We've heard about Northwest 48th Street, the I-180 interchange. Fire Station 11 has an open house tomorrow, or something is coming up really soon, and so it's, this is really great, and this is exactly what needs to happen to that part of our city. They need more residents to attract more retail, which is the, one thing they really, really want. Learned last week that there's no pharmacy. There's no pharmacy in Northwest Lincoln. So they're separated from, you know, by the airport, from a pharmacy. So that's, as we get more houses, there will be a pharmacy. So this is a good thing.
Others would like to speak on this?
I'll reiterate, this is a good thing. This is a good thing.
This is a good thing. So does anyone in the audience like to testify on this? All right? The next item, please?
All right, we're voting.
We're going to vote, I'm sorry, thank you very much.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Taylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Supposed to say, "Call the roll", is what I'm...
Item 7B, Change of Zone 07063C, Application of Ring Neck Development for a change from AG Agricultural to R2 Residential Planned Unit Development on approximately 42.05 acres at Northwest 48th and West Holdridge, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second. Here, a motion by Carl and a second by Roy. Is there a discussion among the council? Would you call the roll, please?
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Taylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 7C is Change of Zone 18010, Application of Andre Ryback for a change from B1 Local Business and R2 Residential to B3 Commercial on property generally located at 11751A and 1425 South 118th Streets, and from B1 Local to R2 Residential at 11751A Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second. Here, a motion by Carl and a second by Roy. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Taylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item 7D, Approving a Conditional Zoning Agreement between the City and Old City Building Group for Installation of Fencing and Screening Along the Boundaries of Property Generally Located at 11751A Street and 1425 118th Street in Walton, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second. Here, a motion by Carl and a second by John. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Taylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Our resolutions on first reading are items 8A through D. Our ordinances on first reading are items 9A through D. Our pending list date certain are items 10A and B, and our pending list are items 11A through C. Anyone wishing to address the council, not on a matter, on a matter not on this agenda and not planned to appear on a future agenda, may do so at this time, since it is an open microphone session.
If you wish to adjust to the council, please come forward.
Richard Escovell, 733 West Cummings Street. I don't know what's going on with the city, but anybody living on, using Superior Street between North 1st and North 48th, this is the fifth or sixth year where there has been construction and closure of lanes. I mean, I don't know how much money's been spent on 14th and Superior Roundabout, and now from 25th to about 30th, and on 27th Street for two blocks, you've got lane closures again, you've got traffic backed up forever. You know, it's getting tiring, because I use that street daily, and people going north and south on 27th, you have to wait three or four lights, especially at times people get off work. You know, this is ridiculous. You know, I don't know what the problem is, but enough is enough. A second thing is, this is Title 18 United States Code, which is the criminal code of justice, and there's two sections I want to read. And first one is on terrorism. And this is called, the term domestic terrorism means activities that involve acts dangerous to human life that are a violation of the criminal laws of the United States or of any state, appear to intended, to be intended to intimidate or coerce a civilian population, to influence the policy of government by intimidation or coercion, or to affect the conduct of a government by mass destruction, assassination, or kidnapping, and occur primarily within the territorial jurisdictions of the United States. I'm bringing this up for a specific purpose, and if you can't figure that out, I can't talk about it. And the next one is treason. Whoever's owing allegiance to the United States, levies war against them, or adheres to their intenities, giving them aid and comfort within the United States or elsewhere, is guilty of treason and shall suffer death or shall be in prison not less than five years and fined and entitled, but not less than 10,000. And it goes through different classifications of treason. And I think we're bordering on that when we're talking about certain items that are not law. And I wish the council would consider that in a future meeting.
Is any else, anyone else in the audience would like to take advantage of the open mic night?
I move adjournment.
Same.
Here, a motion by Roy and a second by Cindy. Would you call the roll?
Camp?
No.
Christensen's?
No!
Eskridge?
Yes.
Taylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Carried, six to zero.